Austin, we really appreciate that. Last year, the Willow served forty-four human trafficking victims. The year before, we served fifteen. This year, we're halfway into our fiscal year, and we have already served thirty-six. We will double last year's numbers. Through the great collaboration between the Willow and the Lawrence Police Department, we believe that we are making great strides in this human trafficking problem and are bringing it out, bringing the issue of human trafficking out of the shadows and into the community conversation. I want to thank the Commission and you, Mayor, for this proclamation this evening. Thank you.
Joe, we appreciate all the work that you and Willow do, along with the Police Department, in bringing this item to light in this community. I don't think a lot of us understand, you know, the effects on individuals, but this has got to be the worst form of crime against people that I can even imagine. And so I want you to know how much we all appreciate you bringing this forward. I'm happy to read the proclamation.
Thank you.
Please.
Well, I've been driving Uber a little bit, which is a ride-sharing program, and I just read an article last week about someone that was an Uber driver in another city that they picked up three people, and he figured out from their conversation that it was like a child sex crime trafficking. And so he ended up driving them to a hotel and knew the number. So he was able to call police and tell them to go to that room, you know, and get that kid out of harm's way, I guess you might say. So I think it's something that we don't really realize that all of us can just be aware of and look around, and it's really important to just know what's going on around us. So I appreciate it.
I cannot recognize the Lawrence Police Department enough and their collaboration with us and the District Attorney's Office. It's been a great partnership.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a proclamation where as human trafficking, a modern form of slavery, is one of the largest and fastest-growing criminal industries in the world and is based on recruiting, harboring, and transporting people for the purpose of exploitation; and whereas sex trafficking and labor trafficking occur in Kansas, and both adults and children of any gender, socioeconomic status, age, race, sexual orientation, or geographic location can become victimized; and whereas human trafficking includes sexual, verbal, emotional, economic, and physical abuse and exploitation, and all forms of abuse carry long-term, complex trauma implications; and whereas Kansas human trafficking laws define commercial exploitation of children, which does not require a showing of force, fraud, threat, or coercion, and references the existing statutory definition of human trafficking and aggravated human trafficking; and whereas the effects of human trafficking reach far beyond its victims and perpetrators, causing disruption in our schools, places of work, and neighborhoods. Now, therefore, I, Mike Amick, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of January 2017 as Human Trafficking Awareness Month and urge the citizens of Lawrence to speak out against sex and labor trafficking and exploitation, to support survivors of these heinous crimes, to encourage community leaders to hold offenders accountable, and to make preventable efforts a priority by hosting events, by creating policies at work, school, and home, and by supporting and participating in programs designed to reduce and eventually eliminate human trafficking as a societal problem. Joe, again, thank you very much.
I have a question.
Please.
Tom, do we have workshops for our city employees to kind of recognize, perhaps, these kinds of things?
Not that I'm aware of at this time.
Joan, do you offer those at all?
Yes.
That might be good for some city employees to get that kind of awareness training, I guess is what I'm saying.
We'll talk.
We'll talk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. And all matters listed on the Consent Agenda or to be considered under one motion will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on those items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will be considered separately. Are there any items on the Consent Agenda that a member of the Commission would like to have removed for separate consideration? I just had, I wanted to point out something on the resolution on Item 8A 7182. I think that there's some spelling errors, and I know that we'll go back through there. When it talks, I think it's supposed to be vide, and it's spelled just V-I-D-E, so we might want to look at those. Okay. I think I caught those, but anyway. But that's all I had. So there was nothing else that a member of the Commission would like to have removed? Is there anything on the Consent Agenda that a member of the public would like to have removed for separate consideration? Okay. Hearing none. Back to the Commission. We need to add to the Consent Agenda claims to two-hundred-and-ninety-one vendors in the amount of five million four-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand eight-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars and eighty-two cents, and that does include the payroll-related payments also. So with the claims, I would entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the Consent Agenda with the claims made by Commissioner Bowley, second by Commissioner Herbert. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That passes five-zero. Next item is the general public comment. Public is allowed to speak on any, to any items or issues that are not scheduled on the agenda. After first being recognized by the mayor as a general practice, the Commission will not discuss or debate these items, nor will the Commission make decisions on items presented during this time. Rather, they will refer the items to staff for follow-up if necessary. Individuals are asked to come to the microphone, sign in, and state their name and address. Speakers should address all comments and questions to the Commission. Is there any general public comment this evening? Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Mike Riley. I'd like to read a portion of a letter to the Commissioners.
Sure.
Concerning the rental of city facilities. On September twenty-sixth of last year, I reserved the Heritage Room in the Carnegie Building for December fourth and December eighteenth. When I returned less than two weeks later to cancel my reservation for the eighteenth, no record was found of my reservation or my deposit. The staff was skeptical that such a transaction had occurred until they examined my receipt. At such times, it's nice to have a hard copy of business transactions. But there are two other points in the rental process that such confirmation is important, but not provided. The first follows the cancellation of a reservation. Although it was clearly established that I could not depend on the staff to remember or the computer system to record transactions, no written confirmation was provided. The second point occurs when the renting party exits a facility. Although a staff member is present at that time, they do not provide a receipt. In discussing this with Ross Schrader, a Recreation Center programmer with Parks and Recreation, he explained that such staff members are only part-time employees who do not have access to computers. Nevertheless, I believe even part-time employees can sign and date a pre-printed form stating that the responsible party has left the facility on time and in good order. In any case, the customer's legitimate concerns can be addressed if the city is willing to do so. Don't you agree? Can I give you a copy of this?
Please. In fact... Mike, I appreciate you bringing this to our attention. We'll make sure that we do follow-up on this, okay, so that we can come up with a way that we can take care of that, okay? Thank you. Any other general public comment? Okay. Thank you all. Thanks again, Mike.
Thank you.
We are on to the regular agenda. Again, the public is allowed to speak to any regular agenda item or give public comment after first being recognized by the mayor. Individuals are asked to come to the microphone, sign in, and state their name and address. Speakers should address all comments and questions to the Commission. First item on the regular agenda is to conduct a public hearing on the Lawrence Public Library Parking Garage Benefit District and consider adopting on second reading Ordinance Number 9322, levying the assessments, and Ordinance Number 9323, a Home Rule Ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds of the City of Lawrence to provide funds for the prepayment of certain special assessments relating to the downtown parking garage. As I understand, do we have to hold two separate public hearings?
No.
One public hearing? And, but we have to have separate actions on both ordinances, right?
If you approve 9322 first, one motion, and then a second motion after.
Okay.
After the public hearing.
Okay. Chuck.
Good evening. Excuse me. I've got this cough that everybody seems to have here. Back in September of 2012, the City Commission adopted Resolution 6995, establishing a special assessment benefit district, including all properties within the central business district. And the purpose was to pay for an additional level to the parking garage that was being constructed with the library downtown, which provided an additional seventy-two parking spaces basically for the downtown. Following the adoption of Resolution 6995, there was a protest period that did expire without protest. During the formation of the benefit district, the City Commission at that time determined to exempt churches, nonprofit organizations, residential properties, and areas that people had for parking, so parking areas. These areas would be prepaid by the city. So not only was the city going to pay for the properties that we owned within the benefit district, but we were also going to pay for those areas that the City Commission determined to exempt. Construction's been completed, and the final cost to be paid by the benefit district is nine-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars and three cents. The city's portion of the assessment, including those exempt areas, is four-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars. That was the recent resolution that was updated at three o'clock. We did receive a couple phone calls, and we've had notices go out several times on this, trying to make sure people knew where we were and what was going on and how much the cost would be and the process and stuff. And over the course of time, we've had a couple inquiries. Some were just questions. Some were, hey, you missed our parking area. Last week, we got a question from Tim Keller, and it amounted to about two-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars that we had to change the resolution today at three o'clock. So that's the difference that you saw in the update this afternoon. But the city share, including the amount that we've exempted for the nonprofits' residential parking areas, is four-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-five, which is about fifty-three percent of the entire benefit district cost. We've provided multiple notifications. We did get a letter from Gary Solers, and just this evening, we received one from Brandy Sutton and Jan Brocker. The concerns that Mr. Solers expressed was that, you know, he's several blocks away from the parking garage and didn't feel that he should be included in the benefit district. The benefit district was formed back in 2012, and we went through the same process. We had public hearings. We had notifications. We, Dave Corless and myself, went to several downtown Lawrence meetings, other meetings. We held a meeting at the Art Center. We came up with a fact sheet to present to everybody and go over everything. We mailed it out to all the property owners. So back in 2012 is when the benefit district was established, so everybody was included in the benefit district. The two ordinances this evening, as the mayor mentioned, are Ordinance 9322, which levies the total assessment. So the properties by state statute have to pay for the total assessment. The second ordinance, 9323, is the Home Rule Ordinance, which allows the city to prepay for those areas that the City Commission determined to be exempt, so the parking areas and nonprofits. The owners are aware of this, the owners that have exempt areas, and we will send out another notice at the end of the public hearing, providing the Commission approves everything this evening, providing them with thirty days, giving them the option. They can pay the full amount within thirty days, or we'll put it on their taxes over the next ten years with interest costs. Kevin Wimpy and Gina Roykoff with Gilmore and Beller here tonight. They're with our bond counsel, as well as our finance director, Brian Kidney, if we have questions. And I can answer any questions if you would like.
Okay. Questions with Chuck at this time? You know, just thinking out loud, it might have been easier to have done this in August if I wanted to pay the entire amount, you know, rather than just following Christmas in my first, my first half of my taxes, but anyway. What was the vote on that original ordinance or resolution that was passed?
Back in 2012.
Was that a four-to-one vote? That's what I thought. Just checking.
Okay.
Just want everybody to be aware. We can't have you about a thing. Anyway, any other question? I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing on both Ordinance Number 9322 and 9323. Motion made in second to open the public hearings on those two ordinances made by Commissioner Bowley, second by Commissioner Larson. All in favor of that item, that motion, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The item is open. The public hearing is open. I would inter, is there any member of the public that wishes to speak to these items? Yes, sir.
I can only do two, well, I can't do two things at once, so I'm going to write my name down first before I say it. Hi, good evening. I'm Steve Novak, the Director of the Douglas County Historical Society and the Watkins Museum of History, and just wanted to draw to your attention the potential challenges that a nonprofit organization faces with an assessment of this sort. We very much appreciate the fact that the first time this went around, we were among the organizations that were made exempt from having to pay, actually having the city come forward to pay what would have been our fair share. That kind of motion was, is very important to us, you know, even though the assessment may not be very much proportionally for a small organization like ours, that assessment, especially when an operating budget is mostly filled with relatively fixed costs, like the cost of occupancy, and it's hard to absorb something even that size, an effort to pay that off for us, made a big difference. Just to give a sense of that proportion, the assessment is roughly half of our entire program's budget for a full year, and not the kind of thing that we can, with some kinds of special projects, raise separate money for or find a grant to cover. So I just wanted to reinforce the importance that that kind of exemption has for an organization like us, and thank you for helping us out in the past, and also for saying that we want to be able to work with you in the future to make sure that, you know, not only your downtown facility is maintained, but the integrity of small organizations' operating budgets can continue to move forward and be focused on serving the public. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other public comment? Any other public comment? Anyone else? I entertain a motion to close the public hearings.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second to close the public hearing on Ordinance Number 9322 and Ordinance Number 9323, made by Commissioner Herbert, second by Commissioner Bowley. All in favor of that motion, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The public hearing is closed. Comment by the Commission? Well, the garage is built. It's got to be paid for. Still not right. But...
That's a separate decision.
Oh, I understand. I will ask the Commission, I have made my feelings clear in the past. If you do believe that I have a conflict, I can step away if you so wish.
Whatever you're comfortable with, Mike.
Then I'll just take you all off. So anyway. Any particular feelings about it? I mean, you know, it's one of those things. My feeling's still pretty deep in the fact that I did work on the, you know, the petition to not have it go through, I think, kind of tells you where I'm at, so, yeah.
Yeah. Well, I guess to me, we're kind of continuing on decisions that have been made before, and we're going to leave some stuff for other folks to do, so I think we just need to go ahead and do it.
Anyone else?
Got to pay for it.
I'll be damned. Do I come see you? Sherry. See Sherry, okay. Okay, so the item then that's before us, and the order that it has to be taken, is Ordinance Number 9322. It's got to be done first, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So anyway, so if there's no other questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to adopt on second and final reading, Ordinance Number 9322.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in the second to adopt that ordinance, 9322, on second reading, was made by Commissioner Bowley, second by Commissioner Herbert. All in favor of that motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No. That passes four-to-one with Mayor Amick's indiscension. Ordinance Number 9323, I would entertain a motion to adopt on second and final reading, Ordinance Number 9323.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second for approval and adoption, was made by Commissioner Bowley, second by Commissioner Herbert. All in favor of that motion, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Passes with Mayor Amick's indiscension. Thank you all. Next item on the agenda is to receive an update, thanks, Chuck, is to receive an update from Ted Boyle regarding a possible downtown grocery store. Ted, Dave, Steve, whoever. Good evening, guys.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. My name's Ted Boyle, President of North Lawrence Improvement, and also a member of the Downtown Grocery Store Committee. I'll introduce David Crawford. I'll speak later on when they get there, so thank you.
Here we are. Four years, and we're, this is the first time that we've been in front of the City Commission. I want to thank Mayor Amick, Vice Mayor Leslie Soden, and the Commissioners, Tom Marcus. I wanna thank Mayor Amick, Vice Mayor Leslie Soden, and the Commissioners, Tom Marcus. It's been a long time, and we feel that we're very, very close. We're very, very close to seeing a grocery store at the Borders Building. Of course, our reputation precedes us, I'm sure. We've, we've been called everything from the group of three to, I think there are eight of us here tonight, but we've been working real hard. I've got, got an excellent group of people. We started out, and I think Leslie was even at the very first meeting, we started out and we thought, well, we'll meet once a week, and by gosh, for the last four years, we haven't missed, I think there was a holiday, maybe once or twice. And, you know, really what that shows is a commitment. It's a, it's an honest commitment. There's been very few groups that I have ever seen that would last four years and not have anything, not have anything to show for it. I mean, that is, that is how far, how deeply we're committed to this. Like I said, I have, I have eight people here. We, typically, we have eight people that, the eight that are here, we meet weekly, and they're a group that just, you know, their commitment is as strong as mine, and I don't wanna take a lot of time, but I wanna let all eight of these people line up, and I know they have something to say, but I wanna let you know that we'll be back, that we know we'll be back. This isn't the first time that we're gonna stand up here and ask for a grocery store. We want this grocery store, and we're committed, and I think we'll, we'll look for about anything that we can, we can do to get it. And, so I'm gonna let, let this group talk. Thank you.
I'm Charlie Bryan, I work at the Lawrence Douglas County Health Department, and the committee asked me to present on the latest food desert data for Lawrence Douglas County. So Allison is handing out a bit of information. You should have received the two PDFs of the maps illustrating the food deserts in your packet as well. For those that aren't familiar with the term "food desert," I wanted to start just defining the term. It is a bit of a technical explanation. In most people's experience, a food desert means they can't walk down the street to a grocery store, or they don't find one in their neighborhood. But the USDA offers a more specific definition that really includes two components, one of which is limited access or low access, and they define for an urban area that to mean that a grocery store is not located within one mile of the census tract. And then, the second component of a food desert is that more than 20% of the people that live in that census tract have an income that is below 200% of the federal poverty level. For example, that would be $48,600 for a family of four in 2016. So those two components, low access, which is measured in miles, and then low income, which is measured by the federal poverty level, are the two components that make up a food desert. And if you look at the maps, what we've created is a map illustrating each of those components. You can see, low access is basically around the periphery of the city of Lawrence, which is generally to be expected, but a large portion of the eastern side of the city is also inside that low access area, not, not just the periphery. I mean, it includes downtown and pretty much everything east. And then low income, the second map, or the second diagram on the right side, shows, you know, low income is fairly common around the community, so it's not as common in the western side of Lawrence, but pretty much for the rest of the city, low income is an issue. When you combine these two criteria, then you end up with what's called the food desert area. This definition is a little more specific than the USDA's definition on one account. We specifically looked at the drive distance to the grocery locations or from the groceries that are currently located in the community, rather than looking at the, basically a buffer around a census tract. So, the difference there was that we believe we provided a more accurate assessment of how people experience access. Census tracts, as you know, are, are not what people are familiar with. When we think about a particular area of the community, usually we think of neighborhoods, not census tracts. And so census tracts can be a little awkward. By, by getting down to drive distance, it literally says, you know, you look at this gray, the gray area in this map, and those are the areas that you can get to, if you're in a car, you can get from there, a mile from there. And then the areas that are in red are those areas that have the, meet the low income threshold, and you also cannot get there a mile from a grocery store. And then, the Downtown Grocery Committee has had an interest for, as they said, four years now, in the particular area of town that's called, we're just calling, or I'm calling, the northeast Lawrence area. So the last map was breaking apart the five census tracts that comprise the food desert areas, and highlighting the number of people that live in the northeast region of the food desert area. There's about 13,000 people. Among those, about 6,000 meet that low income threshold. So those, the underlying census tracts, if you want more details, we can provide that, but there are three census tracts that underlie that area. And then there's one census tract underlying the southeast area, and one underneath the southwest area. So that's my presentation. I can answer any questions about the food desert data, if you'd like, after Ted does his update.
It's like a bad penny, I'm back. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, again, my name's Ted Boyle, President of North Lawrence Improvement, and also on the grocery store group, and I'm gonna give you more of a history of what we've been doing, and, you know, I'm a, I kind of, four years, and some people say, you know, we don't have nothing to show for four years. Well, yes, we do. And at the beginning, you know, I was asked to be on this group four years ago, and the group kinda worked on getting Checkers, a local grocery store, to take this spot at Borders, and for about a year and a half, kinda worked on it, aggrieved reality, owned it at that time, and at that time, well, Checkers kind of walked away from the situation. Then a friend of mine, Steve Ruddinger, came to me, and he had a representative from Price Chopper. And this man's name was Barry Queen, and he owns Price Choppers in the Kansas City area. And we met with him, and he was interested in putting a Price Chopper here. And so he came and looked at the building, and worked with Steve and I, and the mayor, and we kinda looked, and the 20,000 square foot building that Borders is, he looked at that as a oversized quick shop, and said, for a grocery store, sustainability to be in existence for 20, 30 years down the road, it needed to be larger. And so, worked with the developers, and came up with a plan to enlarge the grocery store, or the Borders Building, to 43,000 square foot, and save the north wall. I mean, that's, that's in there, so, you know, you've heard that before, probably. But anyway, when it was expanded to 43,000 square foot, and then a problem came up with parking. Where are we gonna park these patrons to this grocery store? And so, a, about a 200-car parking garage is scheduled to go under the grocery store, and that helped with the parking of the grocery store and the apartments that they want, a developer wants to put on top of the grocery store. And really, the grocery store committee doesn't have any problem with that. Those parking spots would be in the parking garage, and also, it would contribute to the cost per square foot that the grocery store proprietor would pay, and so it'd help offset it, plus affordable housing. The developers have suggested somewhere between 15 to 20 of those apartments be low mod. And so, that would be a plus-plus thing. So, anyway, this grocery store, and also, this grocery store would have a pharmacy, and it would be by a local pharmacist. He has been to the grocery store group and talked about it. And so, you know, when you say, we don't have no accomplishments, well, I kinda take that as an insult, because everything that I've told you to this point, we have accomplished in this four years. And, you know, I've been doing this for 20 years, and I've become a fairly patient person, you know, and so patience always prevails, and also an optimistic attitude. So, this grocery store, and my kinda motto is, I don't give a hoot what it takes to get this grocery store in, we want this grocery store, and North Lawrence wants this grocery store. You know, and this, this grocery store, hitting on something else, when, when it comes, when they do finally sign the letter of intent between a developer and the grocery store proprietor, and come before you, there's gonna be a lot of incentives asked for, mainly because of the parking garage. Parking garage is so expensive. Underground parking is two and a half times as expensive as above-ground parking, but you, there's just not enough room to put an above-ground parking garage. And, of course, we've been working with Hobbs Loft, those residents, and we've got a couple individuals there that thought they wanna do a lawsuit, you know, and Mike Traynor and his group are handling that, and it doesn't seem to be the big concern about it, but it is another bump in the road. And, but, we've had a lot of bumps in the road, and I'm sure we're gonna overcome, so we will be back, and we will support this grocery store, and any incentives, because there's gonna be a tremendous amount of public good of this grocery store, plus the downtown, viability of downtown, there's not a grocery store downtown, there's not a pharmacy downtown, and it's right in the middle of the four low-income neighborhoods, but it, this store will carry everything, everything. I mean, if you've ever been to Constantino's in Kansas City, it will, it will have that appearance inside, and it's very, very affordable. When Mike and I and Stuart went down there and went through the store, a couple stores that Mr. Queen owned, it was very, very affordable. And also, he guaranteed, I asked him, the first time I met him, asked him about the cost of the grocery stores, and how it would compare to Dylan's and Hy-Vee, and he just flat-stated, he says, I can beat the pants off of them. So, and he has stuck with us all this time, I mean, through the hard times and the good times, so I think that this will be, Price Chopper downtown would be a good investment. So, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Lance Fay. I am the Communication Coordinator for the Pinckney Neighborhood Association, which has brought me to the Downtown Grocery Group about a little over a year ago. I'm also a lifelong pedestrian and public transit writer. You may have seen my face in the paper recently, talking about this issue and the difficulties some people can face accessing healthy food in their community. And there's two main points that I kinda wanted to bring up. One has kinda been touched on, is the public good, and you're hearing about, you know, the various things, access problems that a downtown grocery could solve, and services provided. Another one is the economic benefit. One of the things I observe a lot in the Pinckney neighborhood is that we have a lot of bicycle and pedestrian traffic to and from downtown, and some of these people are doing various bits of shopping as they're going. And I get asked, at least once a week, somebody stops me on the street and says, hey, are we getting a downtown grocery? When are we gonna get it? What's it gonna be like? Is there gonna be, and all, all the questions you would expect. And what is always, what I have always keep getting in my head about the downtown grocery stores, there's the jobs created. You've got somewhere between 100 and 200 jobs, at least. The benefit on the adjacent businesses, the convenience of items for people that are visiting or living downtown. I'm acquainted with quite a few downtown business owners and business employees who have all just, are really anxious to see this come to fruition, and we have, have made some good progress. There's, there's, this is, this project's farther along than it has been in the past. So, when it is time to consider any sort of incentives or things that are needed to make this project work, I, I think it's important that we think about, one, the public good, but, two, the economic benefit that this would provide to, not only the neighborhood where I reside, but downtown and north and east Lawrence. And I would encourage you to stay informed and as, as involved as you possibly can be. Thank you very much.
Good evening, ma, excuse me, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Katie Walsh, and initially, I'm speaking for the East Lawrence Neighborhood Association, and we have been in favor of this from the outset, when the Grocery Store Committee first approached the neighborhood, and in late autumn, we again sent a letter of support, as have all the surrounding neighborhoods, and some of them more than once, since this has gone on for some time. We have not sent a letter saying we're completely in support, no matter what, because some people still have concerns about what incentives would be in place, and they just wanna be fully informed, you know, so people are waiting to see how the process rolls out, but no one is opposed to a downtown grocery store, an affordable one with fresh food and a pharmacy. Now, I'm taking off my East Lawrence hat and speaking just for myself as an individual. I really wanna thank you for putting us on the agenda tonight, not only to bring you and staff up to date, but also all the people who watch this online and on TV, because as Lance just said, there's so many crazy rumors, and people still come up to me and go, oh, it's gonna be a Checkers, or Whole Foods is coming, or, you know, and none of that is true. Healthy, affordable food, we're talking to Price Chopper. Another question we get a lot is, how tall is it gonna be? Is it gonna be another downtown skyscraper? No. It will only be 10 feet taller than the current Borders Building, so it will have two floors of, or, I'm sorry, grocery store, and then two floors of apartments, some of them affordable. All the parking, well, the bulk of the parking is underground. The only other thing I wanted to say, because everybody has already said so much so well, is that we were talking at our last meeting about our star community ratings that we got, this remarkable four-star rating that we got in many different categories. And in health and safety, food access and nutrition is one of the things that we're judged on. We got a 76% score, and we could send that score higher by having a downtown grocery store. Thank you.
Thanks, Katie.
Thanks, Katie.
I'm Allison Dishinger. I live in North Lawrence, and I've been on the grocery store committee since I wrote a letter in 2013 to the city commission after reading a couple of articles in the Lawrence Journal world, talking about food deserts, talking about what we're talking about right now, and describing the condition in my hometown as deplorable, and how we should be concerned about it. And being on this group for the last four years, we've made a lot of progress. We have learned to be very patient and take things step by step, and we have had a lot of support from a number of you and from the community. So I ask you that when this project does come in front of you this year, hopefully, that you consider it as the thing it is. The grocery store is something for the public good, for our community, for my neighborhood, for East Lawrence, and for everyone in those food deserts, but also the people who come downtown and live downtown and work downtown. It is something we need as a community, and we're looking at something to have for decades to come. Thank you.
Thanks, Allison.
Good evening, Commissioners. I've been an occasional member of the Downtown Grocery Group as much as my work schedule permits. My name is Towne Peterson. I live directly behind the Lawrence Arts Center, so on Rhode Island Street between Ninth and Tenth. I would simply make the comment that we've seen massive amounts of development in the general region that we're talking about with this grocery store. And I think that one could interpret the way the development has proceeded as essentially letting money, big money, say what's going to happen. That could be interpreted variably as good for or not good for the surrounding community. This is different. In this case, this is something that the surrounding community is asking for. And so I would urge you to think about this project as quite distinct, quite distinct from, quite contrasting with other projects and other requests, for example, for incentives or for support from, from you all as a body. This is not just big money coming to you, asking your stamp of approval for another money-making venture. This is a neighborhood, this is a whole set of neighborhoods, it's your whole downtown asking support for something that's good for everybody. Just make that comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Dan, Danenburg, two-seven-zero-two, University Drive. I have no problem with the concept of a downtown grocery store. It seems to someone uninformed like me and of limited intellectual capability that it's going to require substantial city subsidies in the form of tax abatements and incentives, particularly if there's to be an underground parking garage. As it's been said, those, those aren't cheap. And it seems that other stores in town, at least I know of one, Hy-Vee has a delivery service where they are taking orders via the internet or whatever, and then they deliver the groceries to customers. Now, of course, that, that's a fee, but I think as part of a downtown grocery to serve east and north Lawrence, there needs to be some consideration as to mobility. Is there a way to establish grocery services that could be in a more mobile situation? I know I've, I've, in, in, back in the early part of the eighteen hundreds, well, not that far back, but there used to be neighborhood groceries. Now, those don't meet the economies of scale anymore. But it appears that stores are organizing delivery services. Now, for lower-income people, those services, the cost of those services would have to be subsidized or paid by a public entity. And how that would work, I don't know. But as just the citizen off the street, when I hear about underground parking and two-hundred spaces and whatnot, it gets to be a little, little bit of a concern. We also must consider the fact that Downtown Grocery Store will be a magnet for vagrants, just like the current parking garage is a magnet for juveniles and, like I saw today, vagrants taking shelter there. So there will have to be that considered. And I hope that there, we're not locked into a huge facility that is not central to the, what are defined as food deserts, but maybe there should be other alternatives to get the food needed closer to, you know, customers. I, I don't know about that, but it would seem that that needs to be, be part of the consideration.
Thank you.
Could we answer his question about delivery?
Sure, we'll take one more.
I'd like to, Ted Boyle again. I'd like to address the comments about the homeless people, vagrants around the grocery store. The grocery store group representatives have talked to Barry Queen about that. That's why the hours would be somewhere around six to ten, six to midnight, at the very, very latest. And also, the parking garage would be monitored. And even the shopping carts would be electronic shopping carts that they could not be pushed off the property. They immediately lock up because he said that people don't think that shopping carts are very expensive. He says, "But you just take an ordinary old everyday shopping cart, it's about a hundred and fifty bucks." And he says, "What he'll be using is the electronic, with electronic brakes on them, and there'll be a radius around the store, and when it comes to that, it just locks up and won't go anywhere." And so this, this part about the vagrants and the transients hanging out around the store and that type of deal, we already talked to the store proprietor about it, Barry Queen. So he has taken issues with that and the shopping carts. And, you know, we have done the truck unloading, it'll be inside, it's all in the frequently asked questions. And we presented that also to Hobbs Loft residents, so everybody knows about that. So, but if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you.
You know, Ted brings up a good point. Dan, we appreciate your comments and concerns that you may have as it comes forward. You know, you might want to get a copy of this because it's got a lot of answers to frequently asked questions. I was noticing that, and a lot of things that you may be concerned about there. Since we don't know the timeframe as to when this is coming forward, and, you know, it's subject to, you know, the owners of the property and whoever's going to develop, you know, based on whatever that ownership group's going to look like, it's a little bit early to start guessing about what this project's going to look like and everything about it. And we're going to have time through the process it's going to go through to get answers to any and all the questions that we may have. One of the things, right, you know, we're looking at underground parking. It's probably going to be an expensive item. But we will define in that vote there how important this project is to the community, not only the neighborhood where it sits, but also the community as a whole. And I think that that's one of the things that we have to look at. Another thing that we've got to recognize, this grocery store group, this is a group of people, group of citizens, not really recognized by the city, it's not one of our task forces, it's not, it's a group of people that have gotten together over the last four years that have, have, have felt strongly about an item coming forward. And you're all to be commended for the work that you've done. I mean, it's, it's incredible to see how a group of citizens, not really with the backing of the city, but has come forward to push an item and bring it to this point, and realize that this project is very close and that one that we're going to be able to hear yet this year, I believe. But I can't give dates on that because I don't know any more than any of the rest of you. But I know that there's a lot of work that has been done, and a special thank you to all of you who have participated, members of the commission also that have participated in this. This is, this is quite an undertaking and one to be, you know, one that you, again, you're all to be committed on the work that you've done. So thank you all very much. Thanks for the update. Well, I won't press you on the date of which we can hear it, but that'll be okay. Any other questions or comments on this? Okay, again, thank you all. Be safe going home, okay?
Thank you.
You bet. I don't think that we need a motion to receive the, the deal. Okay, just let it be noted in the minutes that we've received the update from the grocery store committee. Sherry. Next item is to consider approving the proposed Parks and Recreation sponsorship policy, establishing guidelines for the development and approval of sponsorship opportunities and supportive parks and recreation programs and facilities. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Commissioners. Happy Tuesday, first of all.
Let's hold on just a second.
We've got a few hours left in that day.
Let's let them go. How's your first few hours of work been?
It's been going good. I hope the next couple hours and eight o'clock, I know I'm one of the few in this town that probably are on the other side of the aisle there. Hopefully, it'll go well for us, but who knows? I don't think it will, but...
It's six-thirty-nine, I want you to know that.
Yeah, well. I'm Roger Steinbrock, the marketing supervisor for the Parks and Recreation Department. The policy before you today for review is the work of many city departments. Besides staff within Parks and Recreation, there was thoughtful consideration provided by the finance, finance director, the communications manager, the city attorney, and the city manager's office. Through this policy, we've tried to address the past, the present, and guidance towards the future in sponsorships. This policy formalizes the opportunity for sponsorships, as well as provides guidance and direction to both staff and to those seeking a sponsorship with the city. It provides a necessary framework for what is acceptable, creating a true standard, as well as an approval structure to make it a viable and functional policy for everyone involved. In its formalization, it clearly outlines and defines what a sponsorship is. In development of the sponsorship levels, the past was looked at, and more specifically, the last three years were provided and compiled and reviewed, and those, these sponsorships range from monetary amounts for program support to goods and services provided to, to a said program. A breakdown of these were provided as an attachment to the policy. I have also provided a couple example pages of pitch deck that we would be creating once the policy's in place, just to kind of show you what we'd be using and how we would go out and solicit a business. Now, within that, there are other pieces that go along with that. I just kind of created a couple just to kind of show you the visioning for this. Also, I will point out, the section eight is naming rights, and it's left blank intentionally to get direction from, from the commission tonight. Section seven has it mentioned as an appropriate form of recognition. And, you know, we looked at our policy and how we've done sponsorships in the past. It's mainly been for programmings like, programs like Daddy Daughter Date Night, where we would get supplies and things donated to us, to lower the cost to, to the, to the participants. Also, the activity guide, something that's near and dear to my heart. We tried to offset printing costs by soliciting folks to help us support that, and they get a strip ad in those things. And then we also have the golf course, which has the whole signage, and we're looking at other, expanding that endeavor as well, to look at other places for, for funding to help operational cost. And then, of course, we had Sports Pavilion Lawrence, where we actually had the group come and, and solicit people for larger donations, and we secured one. Again, there are other places out at Sports Pavilion that we could offer. There are other places in the community, it could be a shelter, and that's where we're asking for your direction in terms of naming rights of facilities, you know, it could be anything. So to me, that's the black, the blank canvas for you to kind of create what you envision for this community in terms of sponsorship. I, I, as well as other staff members, are here to answer any questions you have. It is our desire that you would approve the policy here tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Questions to Roger?
What community input has happened with this so far?
Well, we have gone to the advisory board, and they saw the copy of the policy last week. They reviewed it and, and, you know, they supported it to go forward to you.
How about the public at large, I guess is what I'm thinking.
Well, I mean, in terms of, you know, we've solicited folks in the past. I mean, it, it, you know, the thing of it is, we've always had sponsorships, we haven't had it formalized. And I think from, from Toni's point of view, she wanted to have something that was defining what a sponsorship was. I think I may be speaking out of turn, but I think I can speak to that, you know, just to formalize it more. There is another document that we're going to be working on here in the next few weeks, and that would be donations, because that's a whole nether topic, too, that we need to look at. But we wanted to tackle sponsorships first, because at the first of the year, we do have people going out and trying to secure sponsors for golf signage and that type of thing at golf holes. So we wanted to kind of get the policy in place before we went out and did that. So in terms of the public at large, we really haven't gone out and solicited, but we have solicited them in the past, and they have been very open to sponsorships of our programs, like the Daddy Daughter Date Night, some of the, the, the egg hunt in the park, we've done sponsorship with that in the past. And it really depends on the programmer and looking at their budget for, for a program. When they're calculating the cost, if they saw there was a, a high price to that price tag that we're going to give to the citizens, they would try to offset that cost by going and finding sponsors. So it's kind of on an individual basis, a lot of times with the sponsorships for programs. But we want to set in motion the other sponsorships that we kind of opened up with Sports Pavilion Lawrence, as well as the golf course, to expand upon that, and look at other opportunities that we may have with some of our assets here in the community.
One thing that I'm concerned about, that I'm definitely going to need a lot of public input on, is the outdoor signs, especially the more permanent type ones. I know that you talk about here, the more banners, fabric banners, but, you know, at sports fields, those can be just as permanent, you know, as a hardwood sign or metal sign. So those are the signs that I'm really concerned about. When it comes to, you know, to just program sponsoring, you know, and something like Daddy Date Night, that's not really where my concerns lie, so...
Well, I will say, in, I think it was twenty, man, my, my memory's kind of foggy. It was 2012, I believe. We actually started doing banners. We were trying to solicit banners for the, the fields at the Ball Diamonds. We didn't get a lot of, of play on that, partially because of demands on my schedule in terms of going out and recruiting folks as well to try to drum up business, so to speak. That becomes the issue, too, is time and effort. We do have staff that we're going to have devoted to doing more soliciting of donors or sponsorships, so to speak, which I think will help the endeavor. And I think the policy, having a policy in place so that everybody understands what a sponsorship is and what those tiers are and what our responsibilities are and what we can go out and get, and then what we have to get, the director's approval, city managers, and your approval, I think so important to that.
Right. A couple of years ago, yeah.
And permanent signage, I think that's really at your feet.
Right. Yeah, that was the big problem a couple of years ago, is I think we were fairly newly elected, and I, I definitely was not interested in that, as you know already.
Sure. Well, and I know there, there are issues there as well, that, you know, bricks and mortar, are they paying for the facility? That's something to take into consideration. But you look at the longevity of a payment of a seven-to-year, ten-year commitment of someone that's providing X amount of dollars, you know, I think that needs to be weighed, and that's where the commission comes into play with a lot of those, those decisions.
This needs advice. Mayor brings up, Roger, do we have to go through our own side ordinance?
Yes, we do.
Do we have to comply with that?
So there are some stipulations... So, there are some stipulations on that.
Yeah, so the permanency of those sign, I think, is taken care of by another part of our own code. And so, you know, we have to rely on that. I mean, there's, there's another step that it has to go through. So, I think that we need to be aware of that also.
And if we made modification, we'd have to do what everyone else does as well, to try to get that approved.
I just, back to Leslie's question, just about the public, something, and Lisa, you know this, on our master plan, that was some of the questioning on our surveys and stuff that went out of other alternative ways to help pay for Parks and Recreation services, et cetera. And that was one of the, some of the survey questions that came in that, that was fairly high to say, yes, we think you should look at other alternatives, other than the tax, you know, the different tax levels and things like that. So, that part has been out to the public as far as getting, you know, feedback from them.
Will you send me, or do we have on here the questions and what the results were attached to this?
Not to this. We will have that with the master plan, which we're very close on and delivering to you again.
That would be really helpful.
Sure. We are looking at, just for your own calendar, I think we're looking at a work session again on February 14th. So, it'll be my Valentine's present to you guys all. Happy Valentine's Day.
I had a quick question on section four under levels of sponsorship. The dollar amounts that are presented here, is that a per year amount or a total amount?
I believe that is a per year, if I will yield to someone else, I think.
When it comes to like city manager approval?
Yeah. It's based on so many years annually.
Up to five years?
And one of them says, I think the first one actually says annually, but then it's, it doesn't say that down like in the second one. But it's like up to five years, and that would be $25,000 annually for those five years. And the same thing the rest of the way down. It's, it would be yearly forever, how many years it stays.
The appeals process, I saw this, it's probably for Tom. This is on the level three group that comes from the department head, I think it was, the department manager. The appeals process can go, will go to the city manager. City manager's decision is final on that, so it can't or will not come on up the ladder, Tom?
I think that was the intent, because the amounts go back to the original amounts that the manager could approve and say. I think the logic was that it would just go to the next step up.
I figured that that's probably what the cutoff was about. And then the other thing, at the very beginning, it talks about how the policy is also designed to ensure an open and fair public process for soliciting and considering sponsorship's, sponsorship opportunities. Has that, has that process been written on, to ensure that?
I think what they're talking about there is a marketing piece to let people know of the opportunities. And what that would do is just reflect what the policy is and give people those opportunities to, to actually sponsor different levels, be on the website, printed materials.
Yeah, it would be similar to like that pitch deck that they had for the Sports Pavilion, similar to that.
The only thing that I'm wondering is, is that to be able to bid something like this, you know, this is not, this is not for publication, but heaven forbid, Amex Barbershop, you know, was to pop up $125,000. You know, no, how do you, how do you?
Wow. I guess you're going to pay for that tax out?
He's not going to do that after he pays parking garage.
Hey, it's worth a shot.
That's right. No, I just want to know how, what kind of process that would I go through and how would I be?
I think on a significant naming issue, and you'll notice that we, we left the language out from under major naming issues.
Right.
And the reason for that was, in previous conversations with the elected officials, there was some concern about, you know, because still the building is going to have a lot of public funding involved in it. Do you really want to turn over the complete naming rights? But I've seen competitions run for the naming rights of a particular facility, and you still reserve the right if you don't get an amount that you think suits, you know, the ability to transfer naming rights to a building. But that's not an uncommon provision, and usually those are very significant dollars to get to that point.
So, out of consideration.
I think you just have to be kind of careful, too, about not only the amounts, but some of the things that I've previously had experience with is when you, you make these arrangements, especially on the big dollar ones, you probably need some sidebar agreements specific to these uses and things that change, and some of that's built into the policy. But when you get into big dollar amounts, there probably needs to be a specific contractual arrangement for those specific naming rights with the big dollars attached to it. Things happen during the course of, of life of municipal facilities and everything else that changes uses, that, you know, takes a service out of function. And you got to be careful that you are protected, that the city, the city commission in the future has the basically unilateral ability to effectuate change to the facilities and the services that they're operating without being tie barred to a donation that goes back maybe 30 or 40 years. And we've seen these kinds of issues develop around the country based on, you know, these naming rights. The, the reason we left it blank was, we wanted to leave it in there so we had the conversation with the commission. But I had a sense that there was commissioners that were very concerned about building naming rights. I think it's one thing to name, you know, rooms and different parts of interiors of a building, but when you get outside and pass that name along, just think about the, the Sports Pavilion. Would you really want to give naming rights, you know, when the public at large is, is really the major contributor to that facility?
Right, that's true.
I think that all comes into the play of all of this. I really do, whether it's this specific policy or not, really advocate for a policy on these things. And the other thing I want to say to you, like I've said before on policy and ordinances and resolutions, you're not going to get this so refined that it, you know, that it covers everything, including the gnat's eyebrow. You're going to have to, you know, there's a little risk. These things are evolving documents. You're going to run into things as we get into contractual relationships on naming and sponsorships that will evolve the, you know, the requirements of the policy to be changed. It happens with everything we do. So, let's get it to that point where you're, you know, you have a high degree of confidence in the policy, recognizing that it's likely going to have to change as conditions change going forward.
I think the fact that staff, you know, read the commission enough to realize that a policy was needed to be able to spell it out, and I think it meets a number of the things that we looked at, you know, at least a couple of years ago, as Vice Mayor brought up, when the commission was still brand new. I, I think it does that, so, anyway.
I mean, you had talked previously about other policies and giving it a little time out in the public venue, and this gives the opportunity to have presented it. Obviously, the staff would like to get moving on this. You have to remember, staff's been working on these things for a long time, and so they get it to the point of precipice, and they want to push it over the edge and get it approved. But I understand the concern about the public's opportunity to take a look at it. We can, we can pull this back to you in, in February and let the public respond, and, and then we can maybe react to that. And in the interim, I'd like to hear from the commissioners about how they feel about big naming rights. We can put language in there that makes it totally discretionary, depending on whether the commission at the time feels whether that's an adequate amount of money after a competitive process to allow for naming rights of a facility. But in my opinion, those would have to be pretty substantial for us to give up that particular right. I know a lot of places are very reluctant to do this. You know, unfortunately, quite frankly, I think it's become much more commonplace in, in Parks and Rec and other facilities, just because of the constraints on revenues that are available. If it's done well, then it means it should be done tastefully. It should be done without over-commercialization of our facilities, and yet does not harm the actual activity and shows some support beyond what people pay in regular taxes to help a facility, you know, and operate and generate some revenues maybe outside the normal for fees or taxes or whatever we use. So, I, I actually advocate for these things, but, but it needs to have a comfort level in the community and with the commission.
One thing I was going to point out, that I think it probably hasn't changed in the two years since we had the conversation initially, but it's definitely come to the surface more publicly are some of our budgetary constraints. And so, one of the reasons that I would, you know, on first look, advocate for, for at least big portions of this, is the reality that in 15 years, when a million dollars plus of workout equipment at Sports Pavilion Lawrence stops working, we don't have a plan B, you know, and, and...
Actually, this was plan B.
Yeah, I said, we, we, we need to start, we need to start shoring up a plan B, C, D, whatever that might be, so that when we get to that place, we, we have a, a plan. I agree that it needs to be done tastefully. I'm not looking forward to chiseling into rock on all of our buildings, Amex Barbershop North, you know, but...
That's not going to happen.
I, I do know that he wants full sponsorship of the ice rink, but aside from that, I think it's, it's open game.
That'd be the skate rink, there's no ice involved.
Oh, oh, I'm aware. But, but we do, I mean, realistically, we do need a plan to pay for all of this stuff that's been built in the last decade, that in two decades from now will be non-operational if we don't have a funding stream.
Well, and being in the marketing business, so to speak, I look at Sports Pavilion Lawrence, it's already been named in this community. And even if you stuck a name on top of that, people are still going to call it SPL, because that, that brand identifier's already been developed there. Hate to say that for those people that may be looking at it, but it is an opportunity still to, to name buildings and facilities. Again, it's up to your discretion, though, based on what we have before you tonight.
And it's all about turnstile, you know?
Yeah, it is.
When people look at these naming rights, they're looking about the attendance and the impressions that are created coming across and having that advertisement, you know, the naming right or whatever for their, their facilities. That's a big part of what their decision-making process is. If you look at universities, universities have been in this game for years. And, you know, you talk about bastions that, you know, kind of present themselves as the higher academic and the more pure of thought. They've gone down that path as well.
Have we looked, sort of sidetracked, but you've got me on that conversation now, have we looked at this at all with regards to public transportation? Because I know in other communities, when I ride the subway, you, I mean, you're, every wall you're facing is littered with billboards and oftentimes not so tastefully done. But I, I look to the, to the future, again, a much shorter future than even the Sports Pavilion treadmills. And, you know, I see the potential for the T to be, lose all funding within the next couple of years.
Well, they've done these major wraps now on these big buses.
Yeah.
And they use those for major advertising. You know, they're, they're driving billboards all over, and they get a lot of impressions with people getting on those all the time.
Is that going to be a conversation that we're going to have?
I, I would think that you, you know, it'll come to you eventually. Somebody's going to promote the idea, and I think we probably do need to have that conversation with transit.
Coca-Cola on the side of that?
Well, I, I can tell you where I've seen them used is in special events, especially the, you know, athletic events. I'm surprised we haven't seen it on the K buses at all, the university fleet. But maybe you have. I, I haven't seen them. But that's a pretty common, you know, especially if, you know, the Junior Olympics. That would be a natural for those buses that will be used in the process, but also moving people around town, to be promoting the, the J.O. And they do those wraps, like I said. I've seen decks wrapped, okay, in events that I've been associated with. Five-story-high deck wraps, okay? And so, they, you know, it, it depends on, it depends on where you want to go with some of this.
I think part of the...
And those were, by the way, those were tastefully done.
Part of the conversation, when, if, if we're talking about pushing this out to the public for a broader conversation, I think the second part of it not only needs to be, this is something we're considering doing, but also including the dollar amounts that come associated with it. Because on face value, it seems like it's not very tasteful. You know, we want Sports Pavilion Lawrence to always be Lawrence. We don't want it to be, you know, Amex Barbershop Pavilion.
Just don't keep saying that.
Well, I'm just, I'm trying to pick on a business that I feel can take it, right? So, but then when you show the dollar amounts that come with that, that changes a lot of people's minds. I was one of the people that took your random survey that you mailed out, and that was, for me, face value, I thought, you know, I don't want...
So, that's what skewed it.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, I know. I was the outlier. But, you know, when I, when I got to thinking about it, to be perfectly frank, I would just assume someone else paid for all of our facilities than me. And if we have those people lining up asking to do it, we have a lot of great things in this town that require money. And, you know, we had the conversation, the first thing that comes to my mind right now is the recording studio at the library. And when we had our budget conversation, you said, at some point, you're going to have to start charging people for this service. Well, perhaps not. Perhaps those people that we charge are not necessarily our city users, but people within our city that see a benefit to it and are willing to pay to have their name on it. The Amex Recording Studio.
And if you have to go to fees, maybe the fees will be a little less because of that.
But maybe, you know, the old...
Well, and again, it's about tastefulness, and again, that's where, it's at your discretion is the commission kind of setting that path. Now, I will say I've seen buses with like Justin Bieber's head on it promoting his album. Who knows, maybe he wants to promote it in Lawrence.
If he's willing to pay enough.
Yeah.
On, on naming rights, too. I mean, we've talked about the big dollar, but history has shown, and it's a little different, but, I mean, we have shelters that organizations say, I would like to build a shelter and put our organization name on that. Or I would like to donate land for a park, but in order to do that, I would, or build a park, and, but I would like to have X name on that. So, you know, there are different things other than a million dollars, or there's $20,000 or $50,000 or whatever that goes to that.
And I know, Leslie, you've talked a lot about trying to increase the number of shelters we provide for, for transit. Correct. And, and, yeah, again, you know, not to steal your five minutes, but on, on the transit issue, I think, you know, we've got people standing out in the rain and a pile of mud to wait for the bus. You know, to what degree is it in poor taste if it says some company's name? If we can get somebody...
Well, what's in poor taste is we have $4 million in our public transit budget, and we're not spending that. What, what's different here is the last number that I remember is that Sports Pavilion is $300,000 in the hole every year, if I remember right.
Right.
So, you know, think about this for a minute.
But that, that four million we have, is, is that four million is our money, you know? And so, if we can, if we can use our money for things other than, than putting up shelters, if somebody else is offering to put it up, I just assume let somebody else use their money rather than go ask other people in our community for more of it.
Yeah, I, I would just say to you, you know, for decades, this has actually been going on with nonprofits. If you go across this country and you drive into any town, you'll probably find something named after the local Rotary Club.
Right.
Rotary Parks, Rotary Pavilions, Lions Clubs, Kiwanis Clubs. All these service clubs have been doing this for years and having their names on them. Gardens. The leap here is from nonprofit probably to profit, and that creates a little bit of tension there. But, but this whole, that's the same concept, it's just nonprofit to profit.
Well, Matthew pointed out the dollars at Sports Pavilion Lawrence, and in 2016, we got $50,000 from LMH, or at least that started. But we also paid a 20% commission on that. And I'm curious how long that agreement goes, that we'll be paying 20% on the...
Five years? Entirety of the contract?
It's either, it's five years, I think.
It's entirety of the contract, I believe, which is five years.
So, when did it start?
Or seven years, pardon me, seven years, yeah.
Okay, but I mean, if anybody comes up and says, I want to do a sponsorship at Sports Pavilion Lawrence, they're going to get, we'll get 80% or what?
We're doing it now, from here on out. Premier is out of it.
They're out.
Ernie, hit the microphone.
Okay, yeah. We're, we're, this is our concept, in-house. Premier is not in it anymore, so that 20% is no longer that...
Glad to hear that, Ernie, glad to hear.
That's good.
Well, I mean, I mean, if there's a... Well, I mean, I mean, if there's an opportunity that comes up that we hire someone to do that, that would have to be negotiated and out.
And our, our policy is silent on what we're gonna do for fees. So that would, who, who's gonna figure that out?
Well, because it goes back to naming rights, to me, it, it lays at the feet of the commission. I would, I would totally, wholeheartedly think that that's what the policy says.
There's, there's communities around the country that have done gift books, okay? You know, like you see at different times of the year, there's gift books and they'll list all of these, you know, streetscape furniture and park facilities and they'll list all these things and they'll put a price tag on it and you can, you can actually buy that gift for the city and you get some naming privilege associated with that. It's not an uncommon thing that's happening and it's, it's, you know, it's, it's gained some popularity. So this, this can grow in a lot of ways and you have a lot of people that are very generous in this community.
Yeah.
And given the opportunity, they may, they want, may wanna invest their, their money back into the community this way than maybe in a, you know, a more commercial way that they typically would.
You don't wanna know what I think of when you, when you say gift. Thinking of a gift that we got and it just keeps on giving, I'll just say that.
Well, and that's why, quite frankly, you do need to have some provisions about that gift. I can tell you some, some strained stories about receiving things that, you know, fall into an area that now people are having complications, they can't move in a, you know, addition of a building, they can't do certain things because someone's loved one that something's named after is in that path. So you have to have some flexibility in the acceptance of these things.
Okay.
And it usually has to come to back to some unilateral authority of the city, you know, to make changes and make a reasonable accommodation if they choose to do that. You have to retain that ability.
And again, I will mention, we are working on that donation policy, so we'll make sure that we include some of that language in that as we develop.
I gotta believe one of the biggest sponsors in town's gonna be the City of Lawrence. I see our names on everything.
We already are.
We are a sponsor of everything.
Taxpayers.
You know, I'm amazed.
Our name should be on everything.
Yeah, we are.
U and K U.
Well, yeah, I mean, I see our name on the back of everything. It's amazing. And I'm glad we're able to do that, but, you know, it's gotta be paid for somehow.
Maybe we should think about putting up facilities for sale just outright. If someone wants to put their name on a building, maybe we should sell them the building. I, I don't mean that half-heartedly, 'cause that's what it looks to me like we're doing.
Well, I'm not even talking about naming rights of buildings at this point, I'm talking about all the other stuff.
No, but this policy is, and that's what I'm not comfortable with.
Well, but this policy, if you look at that particular section, there's no verbiage under that section.
Yeah, well, that scares me more than anything. How about we add some verbiage that says, we will not be naming buildings?
Well, I think that that's what Tom has said.
That's my point.
He wants direction.
That's why we left it out.
He's asking for directions.
All right.
That's why I asked for directions.
Because we wanted the commission's direction. We didn't even put a recommendation in there because we knew that there were concerns on the part of the commission. So, but it still needs to be discussed by the commission and have them give us, have you give us direction as to what you think about that. If you don't wanna go there, that's why that's there, so that you can tell us that. We didn't put in language coming full, you know, blown, you know, go out to bed and give every one of these things the, the review of the naming right. You know, if you wanted to restrict that, like to, to the pavilions that Ernie talks about, that's a whole different level. And a lot of times, that's not gonna be commercial, that's gonna be some of your residents who wanna name something, you know, in memory or whatever, you know, they do that with trees, they do that with street furniture, benches.
I have a problem with streets and trees.
Okay, well, that's a naming right.
That's why I'd like to talk about the Section 8 facility naming right.
Well.
The blank section.
But a shelter is, is a naming right. So what are you guys comfortable with?
I'm not comfortable with facility naming rights.
How big, how small? Any naming right?
I don't have a problem with the Rotary Park. We're a nonprofit, aren't we?
I don't wanna rename South Park something else, I'll put it that way, okay? That's just where I am on that, so. I mean, you know, I think it's one of those things where the community needs to, to have their input as well, not just us.
But see, shelters is a, that's a fairly innocuous typically kind of, I, you know, I, I tend to agree. I don't necessarily think you wanna rename Sports Pavilion, I don't think you wanna rename any of your rec centers, that's where I come from. But, you know, is it a bad thing to have the skating rink, not ice rink, skating rink sponsored by somebody every year? If some, if one of the, the local institutions wants to sponsor that and pay for it every year? There's a big cost, putting that thing up every year, keeping it operating.
Don't get me started on the skating rink.
Well, you know, there's another thing.
That's an example.
There's another thing I'm interested in and that is that there's a lot of opportunities to put some benches on the Lawrence Loop. That's a long trail. And, you know, if somebody wants to have a memorial bench or a gift bench with a name on it out there, I say power, more power to you. And there's gonna be a lot of opportunity because we're gonna get that thing done.
And again, to me, that's, you know, with, with the pitch deck that we have for businesses, we'll have the same pitch deck for, pitch deck for donations, which you're talking about.
And I think another reason that we kinda left this open-ended and on any of the big things like you're talking about, you're, you, this commission or some previous commission, which may have a different viewpoint, may, has that right to say yea or nay.
Yeah.
You know, and that's kind of the reason it's kinda open-ended there too, because, you know, we're talking this minute, this commission, 10 years from now, money may be different completely or whatever. And they may be like the previous commissions, say, go out and sell anything you got, get money for, you know, so.
And I think how, at least the way I read it, and please correct me, those of you who drafted it, but the way I read it is that anything that is Level 1, which is more than $25,000 per year, has to come before us.
You are correct, sir.
And, and I gotta think that.
Yeah.
If we go to rename South Park, you know, Brand X Park, I gotta think that's gonna cost more than 25,000 and we'll have a chance to kill that here.
I mean, if they say it's based on the offer of sponsorship, Mike may go in and say, hey, I'll give you 20 grand to name it Amex Park instead of South Park. And that levels under the city manager approval. So, but this is based on the offer level.
Realistically though, I'm operating on the assumption that Tom Marcus is smart enough that he's not gonna sell the rights to South Park.
He already said no.
For $200 a month, right? So.
Well, I mean, I guess my, my point is it's based on the offer level, not on what might be viewed as intrinsic value. So, I mean, that's an interesting way of doing it.
But you know, you, you're having this conversation right now, right?
Right.
Who, who accepts the biggest naming rights in this community right now?
Nobody.
Huh?
Well, K U.
K U.
K U does.
K U, K U attracts, and, and they, they like most major universities across this country, they work that, okay? There are people that make multimillion-dollar contributions for buildings and for, you know, for the university to be able to invest. That's not unheard of. So when you say, you know, you're concerned about somebody having the naming rights on one of our major rec facilities, I'm not saying you have to agree, but I'll bet you'd wanna know that if somebody walked in here and said, I'm gonna give you $5 million, I wanna name this building, this building, you'd have a decision to make. You couldn't just ignore that.
I, well, the first thing I would think is if our parks and rec, no, no offense to what I was about to say.
Sure.
But if our parks and rec budget is so tempted by that amount of money, is so desperate for it, then we need to look at their budget a little harder in what they're doing. That's the first thing I would think of. Second thing I would think of is, hey, let's find a good city-owned property that you can build your own building on. That's the second thing I would think of. Third thing I would think of is, hey, let's do maybe a public-private partnership. Third thing. That's how I would handle that. And I've thought about that.
I, you know.
Four years ago.
All I, all I'm saying is I bet you there's some other commissioners up there that are gonna take a hard look at $5 million.
I think, I think I would disagree with all of that, so that's just me.
You disagree with all of that?
I watched us cut city staff over.
Yeah.
$70,000, $40,000. Somebody came to the podium and asked to put up a, a bus stop and offered us, I don't know what a bus stop costs, and it meant the difference between having a city auditor and not having a city auditor, I'm gonna entertain that conversation all day.
Probably gonna, probably gonna hear it.
Let's get back to parks and rec, 'cause once again, they have $4 million in their budget. Sports Pavilion does not. So let's, let's get back to the actual topic we're talking about.
The policy that we have before us, okay. Tom, your suggestion is that we don't have to deal with it tonight?
Yeah, I, you know, I, I heard some of the, you know, the, the conversation and, and I think the staff understood that. We wanted to get in front of you because we really do believe it, you need to bring some finality to it. But I don't think it hurts to defer it to February, give the, the community an opportunity to comment on the policy and, and maybe suggest some things that obviously we haven't thought about, that we can, you know, bring that back to you and maybe make some additional suggestions. We can get some feedback from the commission and then come back with it.
Well, if we're gonna do that, can we give direction like to the advisory board to hold a public hearing so that they can, they can get that comment and we can get that?
Certainly can get that done.
Okay. That, that would be one way of being able to do that, to get, give public comment that way. And I think that that's probably a reasonable way to do it. I, I mean, I don't have any problem with the policy the way it's written and then give the feedback on, you know, the naming rights stuff, if we're even gonna entertain things like that, but, you know, at least have the policy in place that we'd be able to have decisions made, you know, from a policy that would exist, but.
It's important to have policy in place.
Absolutely.
It definitely is. I think it's time. I mean, we've been operating without one for so long and I, I know there's questions and especially when we got to bigger dollar amounts that we're talking about for naming rights and spacing rights and facilities, to me, that policy needs to be in place and so hopefully this is the start in that direction for you guys to be comfortable with everything.
So are we gonna talk about putting wraps on police cars next?
No.
No.
How's that different from a public bus?
We gotta get through this first.
Yeah.
No policy.
I think overall the policy's reasonable. The idea of naming buildings, though, I think that has to go to a different level. And this is just one tool that we've been looking at under the steering committee, the master plan and, and we've, we're gonna have to continue to look at other funding opportunities. And the focus groups, those were, that, those were questions that were asked and we got really good feedback and you'll see that through that master plan once we get it up here. We've got to start looking at some other funding options.
I think before we move on, I would like to say thank you to the sponsors that have supported us in the years that you provided the information, 2014, 2015, 2016. You know, they have helped our programs and, and, you know, it's, it's important for us to recognize that and appreciate them. So, you know, thank you to the sponsors that have, you know, been with us with the guidelines that are in place. And the fact that we're looking at policy and guidelines doesn't mean that, you know, we don't appreciate what they've done.
Right, oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Don't go away. Is there any public comment on this item?
So what, I mean, what direction do you wanna pivot to me?
Hold on just a second. I, I would, I would think it would be wise, unless the commission is ready to move now, you know, on the policy it is, as it exists, and give feedback on the items that talk about, you know, the naming of buildings, you know, and the things that, that there is no comment about, you know, that's on, on this policy, to direct this item that goes back to Parks and Rec Advisory Board for a public hearing.
Okay.
And feedback that way, if, if that is where the commission wishes to have.
And let's add it to Lawrence Listens too.
Okay, yeah, just any place that we can get it.
Are there parts of it that, that we're agreeing on that would enable them to move forward with something? I mean, obviously, we don't, we don't wanna move forward with naming rights of buildings at this point, but is there any?
Right, the Level 1 to me is what.
I, I guess I should ask you guys, would that be beneficial to you if there were parts of it that?
I think, I think we can wait on the comments and come back. We're, we're gonna come back with what the, the staff's view is, but we'll have a list of sidebar comments that, you know, you'll have options to, to infuse language in.
We're just talking a one month, right?
Yeah, it's just a month.
Six weeks, yeah.
Okay, so it is agreed?
Peace meal it.
It is agreed after a public comment time period through Lawrence Listens and through the advisory board holding a public hearing, that the item will be placed back on the agenda in approximately one month for decision? Is that okay?
It's great.
Okay?
Yep.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so you need a specific vote on that or is that direction enough?
That direction's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So, next item then is commission items. Any commission items?
Well, we have our strategic planning, January 13th, 14th, 15th.
I'll get into those in managers' report.
Oh, it's in, okay, then I will keep it to myself.
That's you.
Well, I just wanted to take about 90 seconds to thank you, Mr. Mayor. By all, by all tradition, this is probably your last meeting sitting as our mayor. And for those that don't know, I don't, actually, I don't even know if Tom knows this, but Mike has served as mayor for more time than anyone in the city of, of Lawrence history and that's in itself remarkable. But I will tell you just personally, having you as the mayor provides stability. You know, there's four of us up here that have not been here very long and we've had some, some really interesting conversations and events occur in this room over the last year that you've been sitting there. And just kinda having you there provides some stability and leadership that I've truly appreciated, so I wanna thank you for that.
Well, Matt, thank you for that. You know, this has been a wonderful time and our future looks pretty bright, you know, and, and, and I want you all to know that. I think, I think we're, we're being good, good, good hands here and I look forward to that. It's, it's been an honor. It's been an honor for me to be able to serve the community in this capacity and I wanna thank each one of you for giving me that opportunity and trusting, you know, trusting me with a little bit of the reins, not very much, but a little bit. But it's, it's been, it's been incredible. You know, I, I got this little girlfriend that, you know, I think all in the world of and.
You know, your mic's on, right?
Yep, yep.
I don't think he's talking about me.
My wife Marilyn, my wife Marilyn is, is truly my girlfriend and, and, you know, she, this young lady, bless her heart, Lord have mercy, first got elected, what, in 1983? You know, she, she's put up with a little bit. Tom, I gotta guess she's kinda like Deb, right? And, yeah, and, and that being able to go home and, and talk to her about things is so important to me. And, but, you know, being able to serve a community that I've grown up in and, and be able to see my thumbprint on, on things from time to time, it's, it's been pretty cool, I gotta admit that. So thank you, Matt, and, and thank to all of you, thanks to the citizens of the City of Lawrence. It's, we'll make this fast next week, how's that?
Thanks for your service, Mike.
Thanks, thanks, I appreciate this.
Thanks for your leadership.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks. Okay.
Thank you, Mike.
Always a pleasure. Uh, city managers' report.
Well, let me just start off by saying that I did know that he had served in a number of cases, because upstairs in the, in the, in the commission room, there's the rogues' gallery of all the previous mayors, and I was looking at all these people, I said, "Gosh, that looks a lot like Mike's son." On one of, on one of the earlier pictures, and somebody, you know, obviously advised me that it was Mike, and, actually, Mike and I have, you know, and, and this is what, what happens, you do develop a little bit closer relationship with the mayor amongst the commission members, and Mike and I have developed that kind of relationship, there's a lot of mutual respect between the two of us and how we get things done. With rare, the rarest of exception, I have not seen Mike really get perplexed or out of sorts or confused, he just seems to have a nice demeanor about moving forward on issues. So, on behalf of the staff, let me say thank you, because it's been good working with you and, and your leadership role from the commission back to the city staff, and, and we appreciate, um, having had the chance to work with you and, and how easy you've made that working with the staff, so, we appreciate it.
Well, I appreciate that, I did wanna, you know, as I, I look back through time, one of the things that, and I was telling Matt before the meeting began, we were talking about, you know, you know, and Stuart brought up about the city hall used to be in in the bank building at 9th and Massachusetts Street. Well, I've had the opportunity to, uh, work with several city managers, obviously Tom Marcus being the newest, Diane Stoddard, Dave Corliss, Mike Wilgin, and Buford Watson. Always remember when you first get elected, you know, you, you go to the city manager's office and, and, "We're gonna, we're gonna lay it all out," you know, always got, you got a big kick out of that, and I had the greatest amount of respect for Buford Watson in that the longevity that I have in this job, a lot of it has to do, obviously, with the voters that have, um, thought enough of me to put me back in, but second of all, was being able to learn from some really great city managers and all of you to be included in that. You know, we're very fortunate in our community to have that kind of leadership in the staff and making sure that, you know, they carry out our policy, obviously, without question. You know, they, they fight it to the end, but, you know, they, and, and, and that's all, that's, that's okay, I don't mind that, but I always remember Buford, and he says, "How much do you know about city hall?" And I said, "I only know where the water department is, 'cause I've only been in there long enough to pay my water bill." And I always remember, he said, "Well, do you want to learn it?" And I said, "Sure." And so, by, by being with various departments throughout town, I had the opportunity to really learn a lot about it, and, and that was something that was really fun, and getting to know a lot of city employees that I might never, you know, really got to meet, so, something that's been very, very good, and, you know, who would ever thought, I promised my wife when I was first elected, I was 29, you'll love this, uh, Marilyn's, you know, we're talking, she said, "Oh, don't worry, Marilyn, I only got a two-year term, I'll, I'll be done." You know, that'd be that. So, I guess I haven't kept that promise, but that's the only one I haven't kept while I've been here, so, anyway, go ahead, Tom.
Well, you did heed Buford's advice, because you do know a lot about what goes on at city hall and in the various departments and.
I own a barber shop, that's, that's.
Yeah, yeah, and you get a lot of insight there, too, I'm sure. So, in terms of the city managers' report, just to notice that there are low-income elderly utility rate program, which provides a, a pretty substantial discount for seniors that are qualified. You have to be 60 years of age. For an individual, your income cannot exceed $13,068 as head of household, it cannot exceed To get more information about this or a flyer, you can call 832-7878, and we'll make sure that that flyer is on our website as well. In November, the November Building Department Report, we issued 202 building permits in November, valued at about 11, almost 11, uh, $1,750,000. It included 14 new residential projects, and you can get more information on that deeper into the report. Obviously, you passed the revised economic development policy, something that was an initiative of this commission, and took quite a while to get to it, but that was approved at the December 20 report, our meeting, and that will be effective on January 15, 2017. I'm not gonna get into the Lawrence Douglas County Fire Medical Report, but to say, there's a lot of financial information in there as well as service-related information. Chief Bradford and I were talking about this report, and I'm gonna have him come at a future meeting and just kinda walk you through the report so that you can have a little bit more specific information about what some of this information actually means. I wanted to report out on an arts and community prosperity project. Arts and Economic Prosperity Five is a national research study conducted every five years to measure the economic impact of the local nonprofit arts and culture industry through audience surveys and organi, organizational financials. We expect to have a comprehensive report as a result of this in June of 2017. We've had 1,200 hard copy audience intercept surveys report back, and 22 Lawrence Douglas County nonprofit art organizations have submitted their financial data. Based on some of this information, it's estimated that we take in about 15.7 million, 700, 15,700,000 in total annual expenditures through the arts organizations, with about 621,000 attendees at various events that are run throughout the year. There's 225 for-profit art-related businesses in Douglas, Lawrence and Douglas County that employ about 973 people. Part of the, the point of all of this is to show some of the economic impact of the arts and culture. Some of the things that are listed in here are not just arts, like the Art Center and some of the various other nonprofit art organizations, but the libraries embedded in this, K U's lead center, the museums, both at the university here in the city, are all in there, and they all make up those numbers as well. In terms of future agendas, to go back to kinda some of what Leslie was talking about, first, though, we have next meeting, we'll have the election of a new mayor and a mayor pro tem, or a vice mayor, and we're gonna have a consent agenda with that meeting, but we're not gonna have regular business items, and so that people that wish to attend and have a little reception, we're gonna have a reception available so that guests of persons, you know, that are in the running can certainly be here for that purpose, and to congratulate the new mayor and mayor pro tem. January 13th, we have the strategic, the first of the strategic planning sessions from 2:00 to 6:00, it'll be located at the Biotech Center at 2029 Becker. On the next day, which is a Saturday, we start at 9:00 at the same facility, and we run till 4:00 that day. And then we have a public hearing on the 1305 New Jersey Street Project on February 7th, and then we return to strategic planning on February 2017, that's President's Day, that's a Monday, that will run from 9:00 to 3:00, and that will also be at the Bioscience Tech Center on Becker. And that's my report for this evening.
Mayor, can I ask Mr. Marcus a quick question?
Sure.
Thank you.
Well, you can, the mayor needs to respond to that.
Um, my name's Katie Walsh, and, um, East Lawrence Neighborhood Association, um, we've had several people in our neighborhood make use of the discounted utility bill, I'm sorry, low-income, I can't remember the official name, it's a great program. Unfortunately, it's not, that flyer's not available online.
Yeah.
And oftentimes, it's a grandkid or their kid is trying to look into it for them, so it'd be real helpful if it was.
We'll make sure that's on.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Katie. Other questions, or Tom?
No, I'd just like to point out that in the same room that you have the mayor's pictures, you also have a rogues' gallery of city managers.
Yeah, I didn't notice that until the other day.
Yeah, that's true. Anything else? Okay. So, let's see, calendar. Friday, we've got the legislative priority breakfast. There's a little bit of everything on there. All right. Nothing else then, right? Well, it is 7:35, the only other words would be "Go Hawks."
You gonna take public comment on that?
On "Go Hawks"? We could. Entertained motion to adjourn, again, thank you all very much for your kind comments.
So, move?
Second.
Motion made in second to adjourn made by Commissioner Larson, second by Commissioner Herbert. All in favor of that motion? Aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We are adjourned, thank you all. The only.